Okay, it's 7 o'clock. I will call this meeting to order and if we would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just.
I messed it up. I have to pay more attention. We have approval of the agenda and I will take a motion and then we can make any adjustments.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Doug. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda that they would like to ask for? Adjustments? Okay. Then I will call the question. If you are in favor of the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. Okay, is anybody in disagreement? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. Public input.
Do we have the students in here?
Do we have the students in here? Yep, student representatives, number 10.
Okay, cool.
But thanks for checking. Is there any public that would like to make any comment? We didn't have anyone sign up, but since we're on that item. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. I guess we can also skip board discussion of public comments because we didn't hear any. So, approval of minutes from February 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So moved. This is Liz.
Goodness, Liz, you're very loud. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's not your fault. It's how you came through the speakers. Thank you. Second. Anybody?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the minutes?
I do.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Under number 11, the bylaws review. The sentence, starting with Mr. Doucette. Mr. Doucette noted that description of personnel committee online is not accurate, also should match bylaws. And actually, I said it the other way around, that the bylaws are not accurate and so the description of the personnel committee online is accurate. And so the bylaws need to get changed or adapted in some way. Right? Okay? I think that's what I told you, Anne.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Maria?
Thanks, Adrian. Like Lynn, not like, not the same part, but let me just get back to my agenda here, or my... Under 15, this is a tiny little typo. This is not a huge thing, but just above, the paragraph just above where it says terminations, just that, and I'm sorry, I didn't say this like previous to the meeting, but it's about that I would concern for the need for more information about performance than the board currently receives, rather than that, the board currently receives. Very tiny typo, but.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I will call the question. Are we approving the minutes as amended? Please raise your hand. Were we missing anybody?
Probably easier to look at that.
I do that all the time. You're right. It's a much better... Okay, thank you unanimously. Thanks for reminding me of that. It just doesn't feel right not to look.
Well, I saw you up there and you weren't raising your hand. I'm like...
Well, I was, but I wasn't on... Yeah, never mind. That's okay. Financial management questionnaire. Brian, are you handling that or is Stan going to make a comment about that? We received it in our packet.
Yeah, great question. I thought Stan was going to be here, but I think it's a fairly simple one to go through.
He may not have thought that we were on this point yet. Is he here tonight or is he not working anymore? Okay. Stan isn't still...
He's not here.
Okay, all right.
He's not able to do it.
Oh, at all? Okay, then we won't ask his question. Okay.
But it is, did you, what I think he was going to ask is that when you ask you right down, you have to attend to this each year. And also, he was going to ask if all board members have received it and seen it.
Well, we all got, we all received it, whether...
I think it has signature for the board chair.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think probably a motion, a motion to the effect of the board has reviewed the questionnaire and authorized us the chair to sign.
Has everybody had a chance to review it or do you want a minute?
Who did it come from?
It was in the board packet.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Garcia.
It was just a questionnaire that Stan had filled out, but we have to review and... I mean, it, I'm assuming that everything is, I mean, he's, there's nothing, I mean, other than to know whether it's right or wrong and I don't think any of us could actually answer that question. I mean, it's things like, does the same individual open the mail and deposit checks? Well, you know, he says no, and, you know, it's just the method.
I think we do it every year.
We do, but...
Yeah.
So I would take a motion, if people are done reviewing, to authorize, I guess, me to sign off on the questionnaire. Is that okay with...
Adrian, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Liz. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, then would you please raise your hand if you approve of me signing off on the questionnaire and I will look at the screen this time. Okay, thank you very much and we will move on. Town meeting moderator appointment. Brian?
Yep, I had spoke with Michelle Kenny, Wallingford resident and parent, and she is willing to be moderator, so I would recommend that the board make a motion to appoint her as moderator.
Okay, I'll take a motion and then we can have any kind of discussion if we need any.
I'll start it. So, so moved.
Thanks, BJ. A second? Thank you, Lynn. Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm opening this up for discussion then. I mean, I personally know Michelle not well, but I mean, I've had interactions with her more than once and she's very competent and very, you know...
As a Wallingford resident who's, who knows Michelle and has seen her in action...
So speak.
In our town.
Yep.
I fully support this choice.
Does anybody else have a comment? Okay, then I will call the appointment. Do, or the question, are, will we nominate or will we appoint Michelle Kenny to act as moderator at our upcoming annual meeting? Yes, Matt?
No, I'm raising my hand.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you approve, please raise your hand.
I was all ahead of you. Jumped the gun.
You did. That's okay. She's just confusing me. It's not good.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, thank you very much. She is appointed unanimously. Now, we have the superintendent search process and we've left Jackie on there, but she wasn't, she's actually on vacation. She's actually going to be joining us for the superintendent search meeting tomorrow from Hawaii, just so that everybody can be jealous. But she's calling in for our meeting, which is really nice of her to take away from her vacation, those couple of hours. We did have a bit of a superintendent search process update in the personnel meeting and I don't know, so Lynn, would you like to report what was reported there?
I can do that.
Because you have minutes.
The committee has been asked to narrow the questions and to go through the applicants at this point and provide that to Jackie by tomorrow.
Yes.
Asked the committee, how do you view the candidates thus far based on the applicants and narrowing the questions down. Then there's another community conference on 21 February, which will be fully virtual since the school, it will be break time for the schools. BJ made a comment that the number of applicants, I'm sorry, are good. And the process is going well and that Jackie has been a tremendous help.
I think that's pretty concise and to the point and that is about where we are. So we do have a meeting, you know, tomorrow and so that, you know, there will be further progress.
And just, I'm going to reiterate, the 21st, fully virtual.
Oh, 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock is another community conversation about the superintendents.
Right.
So just reiterate that one.
Right, and we'll be, we'll be taking comments on what we're, what we are searching for in a superintendent. And we've gotten a fair number of responses to an online survey question, which is what we actually asked people at the last community forum. We asked those same, those same questions as are being asked online, but there was, you know, more opportunity for people to give more, more feedback than, than just the answers to those questions. So come on the 21st and, and, you know, voice your opinion. We do have superintendent search committee membership on the agenda and that was because, Lynn, are you still interested in becoming a part of the superintendent search committee?
Correct.
That was why it's there. I said that was why it's on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, Lynn is just making the, the request that we add him to the superintendent search committee and that, that would be a board action, so I guess I'll, I'll take a, a motion to approve adding Lynn to the superintendent search committee. Anyone is so inclined to do that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, BJ. Second. Thank you, Matt. Is there any discussion? I think there was a misunderstanding that we were going to be doing a lot of our meetings virtually. So Lynn said, ah, I don't have to do it, and then he realized that he could do it very easily, so he'd rather be on it. So I think that's a reasonable thing. So, okay, I'll call the question then. Will we be adding Lynn to the superintendent search committee as a full member so that he has all that paperwork to do tonight or tomorrow?
Welcome aboard.
So that he's welcome to come to the meeting because he has to do his homework.
Yeah, really. Thank you very much.
Okay, so calling the question, are we adding Lynn Doucette to the superintendent committee? And I'm still looking on the screen. All right. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, sorry, thank you. There were no, other than that, everybody voted, so Lynn is abstaining, but otherwise it was unanimous. Thank you, so...
And thank you, by the way.
Okay. We are a flexible group. Student representatives. I see you guys are on camera.
Hi.
Sidney?
Hi.
So we had got a chance to speak to some students. I think we got a group of about eight freshmen.
There was like five.
Oh, five.
He's a positive person.
And we had talked about some concerns or positives that they have seen. One of the biggest things that they would like me to discuss is, you know, what the driver's ed class is really backed up with drive time. There are senior, or not seniors, I'm sorry. There are juniors and mainly sophomores that are 16, 17 who cannot get their licenses because they have not completed class and they can't get enough drive time. And Mr. Pluto, I spoke to Mr. Pluto when I wasn't about what he would like to see and he said that he had brought four qualified drivers to Mr. Yount that would like to drive, help him out with drive time and he did not, he did not, he basically turned him down is what Mr. Pluto was saying. And he had mentioned that Connie, who was a bus driver at Mar River, and I believe she is a career educator, she had put an interest about wanting to also be a driver and help Mr. Pluto with the driving. Mr. Pluto even stated that even if it's one part-time driver for one class would be helpful for him and now he has to drive on a day to day with students next week just to try to make up time that he is missing. That was one of the biggest concerns that they wanted us to bring up. The second one is announcements during class time and during school. It's, I would say there's roughly two or three announcements every class over the intercom and it is distracting. The teachers have to stop teaching and wait the announcement to be over. Most of the time they lose their train of thought, have to repeat or go over again what they are teaching. The third thing is the new cell phone policy. It kind of fell down and it was only enforced really by teachers on the first and second day. The only place it is really enforced every day with every student is the library. You walk into the sign saying cell phone in the bin and students steward, so I arrange both, both number mine students every time, but teachers more or less do not tell the students to put it in their cell phone pockets that are, that are given to them, every teacher in every class. And students just think that it was kind of a waste of money to those pockets and it's not being enforced like it was on the first and second day. And it's just kind of saddening knowing that the teachers were given those cell phone pockets and not even put to use.
So a question for you.
Yes.
Are, are cell phones being used in class again?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's the big question. If kids have them in their backpacks or whatever, then the fact that they aren't in those pockets doesn't really, you know, that's not a big deal, but if they're continuing to be sitting on their phones, that is a big deal.
Yes, I, yes, I'm sorry to mention that, but yes, there are students who do still use their cell phones in class, same group of students that were before and acting like that.
And one more question and then I'll open it up to the floor. What kind of announcements happen during school, during classes? Because that's a lot of announcements.
It doesn't matter, but mostly Mary Bride, Ms. Bride, she calls her students to come to the main office, whether they are marked absent, whether marked here before, didn't get permission to leave, or students are being excused from school by their parents. Students, students wondering if phone calls could be made to that class, if a student is being dismissed from school, whether it's a doctor's appointment or their parent just needs to pull them out of school. It's just very distracting, honestly.
Sometimes it's also the teacher, she calls teachers to the main office just for something. It says, she, she calls teachers to the main office, but also says, oh, can you call this number? So I don't, like, I just talked to a bunch of teachers and they say it's distracting and today, and while I was in school, I was in a meeting and they, and I can't, like, the morning, the morning announcements just are very long and they, it, like, we already started our meeting and we had to wait until they were over, so that's also, it just takes a while because there's so many announcements. So I don't know if we can do something about it or what.
Okay, well, your comments have been heard by Ms. Ruck and by Mr. Hill, so I think that's a good thing.
There is one thing I forgot to mention.
Oh, that one?
A concern that was brought up towards the beginning of the year as well, but more and more students are speaking out about it. Towards the end of the day and even in the morning, there are parents who park in the student parking lot and they don't really park in student parking spots, more or less in the fire, no parking fire zone and also where the car is trying to drive and it creates a, more or less of a traffic jam for students that are trying to leave and/or pull in in the morning. Students are wondering if something could be done about that as well.
Not the students of the parents who are doing it though, most of them.
The parents are doing it. When students are trying to leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that, those, that's reasonable. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Remember, you can speak up on, on any topic that we're talking about too, so, so, you know. Turn your cameras on and raise your hand.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add with their, the pickup, school pickup.
Yep.
This may be something that we need to address. I pick up my son almost every day from school and the, our road, you know, when you drive in and you go right, parents are parking on either side, on both sides. The buses or even eyewitness FedEx not being able to get through because both, there's two vehicles there, so I don't know, Brian, if we're going to have to like look at something that way because it's just gotten, it's gotten worse there.
Snowbanks will do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's snowbanks, but I mean, they've pushed them back pretty good.
Yeah, but, but you know...
I seem to recall in the past, several years ago, we did some new marking of lines and some new, new posting of signs to try and address something like that and it may be that we have to do that again.
Yeah, it sounds like it just, everybody needs to get reminded of their, you know, the behavior that's expected.
How it works.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, people, you know, you, you try it once, nobody slaps your hand and so you do it again and it, and then somebody else sees you doing it and then everybody does it. Okay, guys, what do you have? I see your hands are up.
So I also, earlier today, I talked to Ms. Bride about it because also, like, I didn't have my car, so, and somebody parked in my parking spot and it says reserved for, like, space 42 reserved and that's my parking spot. And so just somebody parked there and then I went out and nope, and it was gone, but I told her, she, and she like told me, just come and tell me the car, the license plate, and we'll tell them to move. And she also said that there's signs, there's like two signs that say student parking from like 7:00 to 3:30 and in the, around the school, like around the parking lot and, but I don't know if adult, like, parent can see that. So like most, almost every day, I try to go out of the parking lot and he, and then Pierce is right behind me and he has to back up so that I can back up, but I can go through a different lane because parents are blocking where I'm trying to go through. And so I just sit there and then he has, we have to back up and we have to go a different way. So it's like, it's also stressful and because we can't get through, we can't like leave, we have to wait until all these parents go and then we have to, and then we just leave, but it's stressful for us because we're just trying to, we can't.
I get it. Don't, I mean, I hate, I don't want to make it sound like it's not important because it absolutely is important, but this is a recurring problem. I mean, my kid's graduated over 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and we've had this conversation before.
Yeah.
You know, as I said, people, people just push their, push the envelope and they just have to be reminded on what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
And it sounds like that it's caught enough interest so that that will probably happen.
I was going to make a suggestion about some possible actions.
Yep, go ahead.
Like the parking thing, it may be a good thing to add to buildings and grounds for them to kind of a, a quick review.
Yep.
The driver's ed, I don't know, is that a conversation that we should have in personnel or is that at the high school?
We haven't, but we certainly can.
And...
I think.
What, Brian?
I said good thoughts on both of those, I think, so that we keep working on them.
Yeah, and the announcements, I think a proposal given to Tyler would probably be a very good action step you could take about ways that you think could improve that process.
I mean, I'm sure there's ways...
That's off the top of my head.
Yeah, there's ways to identify where kids are, but I'm sure it takes a lot of, you know, it takes far more time than just getting on the intercom and saying...
And then maybe talking about, you know, a duo person in the office that has to go fetch kids.
Right. Or just call their classroom, because we do have phones in the classroom.
Yeah, it, like I said, that's why I said a proposal to Tyler might go a long way for that one.
That probably is a, you know, that's a great first step to talk to Mr. Wedeman.
Mm-hmm.
But we've all heard you, so...
All right, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you.
Also with driver's ed, I forgot to mention one, one to get, Mr. Pluto had told me that next year it's probably going to be his last year teaching, so he is concerned that it's going to be coming down to final seconds of finding a replacement for him. And that's just one thing he wants to, he wants to set something up for after he leaves as well and not have to make it seem, put stress on anybody, make it seem like he's leaving out of nowhere and rush to find a replacement for him.
Okay.
Well, and just in terms of that, I can speak a little bit to that being a driver ed teacher myself. We should think about if Mr. Pluto is going to retire and I'm sure he's about there because he was here when I was here. And so, that was a long time ago, but my point is that it's very easy, believe it or not, to become a driver ed instructor. If you have a bachelor's degree, you need to take beginning driver's ed and advanced driver's ed and you can do it in a summer up at UVM. So, because that's what I did.
Are you volunteering?
No, I can't.
You can't work for us.
Well, it depends on what happens in a couple of weeks.
Oh, that's true.
Maybe I can.
I wouldn't announce that.
But the point is, you know, maybe if we get, it's a great way to make extra money because in the summer you get paid an hourly rate and, and that's very helpful for teachers who, you know, I'm not going to say don't have anything to do in the summer, but their workload is diminished.
But have a few extra hours that they'd like to do something and make some money.
Yeah, and, and, you know, again, when I was here as assistant principal, Mike would take off at the beginning of the summer, I would teach the class and do the driving to give him a break from everything. So, you know, it might be worthwhile to get the word out to the teachers and staff that we're looking for driver ed teachers and, you know, folks can, can, as I say, it's relatively easy.
So you don't need a regular teacher's license is what you're saying? You needed some kind of a, you just needed a bachelor's degree and then you get an endorsement to be a driver's ed instructor?
Yep.
I never did that.
Don't need CDL.
That's very interesting.
Don't need a CDL.
Oh, that is very interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you guys have anything else because your hand's still up?
Oh, um, no.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Yeah, those are all great things to have brought up. Now we're all on the same page. COVID dynamics update.
Yep, that would be me, and I'll say real quick, I've spoken with Connie. I know Connie is interested in driver's education. She, she works for us currently, so that's, I think, a good person to keep in the loop and working with.
And it's always been a problem to have, have driving time. I mean, it happens every year. Oh.
Well, Jody, do you have something to add there?
I want to add to that, that we definitely are aware of this. There's somebody that works for us with a social studies license. We've been trying to convince to add a driver's ed license to that. Working on that, we have had discussions with Mr. Pluto to see if we can have two sections next year and with the rest of the global citizenship department to make sure that we can work that out, hoping potentially to have two sections this summer. Ms. Thompson just rewrote, like, and sent out to all the, the parents, a protocol for getting kids onto the waitlist to make sure that all of the parents of kids that are of that age know how to do it, to make sure that everyone has that information, so pieces are coming together. Doesn't mean that it, there isn't a backup, but all of those pieces are coming together too.
Is this backup a result of, of the slowdown in, in kids getting driver's ed during COVID?
Yes.
Because, I mean, I know there was a big backup because we just weren't offering it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, it gets backed up.
Right, but I mean, even to be able to take the class.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was really good. Okay, Brian, we are still ready for you to go. Sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. No rush at all. I, I will share with you... I, I will share with you, I think, the news of the week. I think we had mentioned this last time we met. But masking is really the issue on the horizon for us. Some people probably tuned into the governor's press conference on Tuesday. Some folks have probably seen the news reported through some other outlets or just heard through word of mouth in the community. There were, there were some firm guidance changes that were announced yesterday, and I want to share those changes. I want to share a little bit of information about our schools and where we are, and I want to share a little bit about the region and where the region is, if that makes sense. So it's going to be quite a bit of information. Feel free to stop me if I say something that doesn't make sense. No need to wait till the end for questions if you got something, throw it at me. So the biggest piece that is shifting is that, starting on February 28th, we will be going to, back to the guidance of an 80% vaccination rate threshold of eligible students to be able to remove masks. So if you remember when we were having this conversation in the summer, the Agency of Education had put out that 80% threshold, and they had told schools that you have the first 10 days of school to sort through who's got vaccinations. And then after that 10th day, if you meet that 80% threshold, you don't have to mask in that building. The way the year played out, that never happened. That 80% threshold kept getting kicked down the road. I think they did it maybe, maybe twice, maybe three times, and that never, we never got that guidance. That was put on pause. So the recommendation has been masking since the start of the year from the Agency of Education. What was announced yesterday was that, starting on the 28th, we will, the agency is recommending that if you are below that 80% threshold, again, that's eligible students. That's not for all students. So our pre-K students that are not eligible do not count in that number. So if folks are eligible and have been vaccinated, we can count them. And I'm actually going to try and show my screen here and show you where we are and where our numbers are. Amy Ridman did some great work to throw this together back on the 11th when we had a sense that this was coming our direction. Is that big enough?
No. Not for this room.
Fair enough, I will make that bigger.
I'm right in front, I can't see it either.
Okay. I'm going to highlight a row here, and I think you'll be able to see this. That is our percentage for number of students that are eligible and vaccinated. So percentage of that pool of eligible students that actually are vaccinated. You can see Mill Rivers at 64, but the elementaries are a little bit lower. So if we follow the state's guidelines for coming back on February 28th, we would not meet that threshold. I asked Amy to do something else, and because she has been phenomenal working with her health office to keep this information accurate, up to date, and, and easy to work with. And then all our health office folks have worked hard to do that this year. She could, she could throw this together for me, and she could show me this last column. I'm going to highlight that so you know exactly what I'm talking about. Not only the number of students who are vaccinated, but the number of unvaccinated students who have gotten a COVID positive result since January 1. So if you take our vaccinated students and you add to that our students who arguably have a natural immunity because they have had COVID in the last, not quite, maybe 45 days, we still don't reach those numbers. So I give that to you just for context, because that's a question that we definitely have. You know, if you have immunity through a vaccination or if you have immunity through having a positive COVID result, you know, should that matter? If we're talking about the virus being transmitted in our school populations? Well, we don't even hit those thresholds that way, but I think that is interesting information to have. So in theory, if we were not to wear masks, we would still have large, large groups of our students who, who could easily transmit COVID-19. So I share that with you just to give you some local context for what that 80% means for us. Does that bring up any questions yet?
Do we know what the surrounding schools, what their numbers are? You said you had.
Great question. You know, regionally, regionally, I think there's maybe one high school who is above the 80% threshold. I, I'm not going to say who that is because I'm probably going to get it wrong. But I remember one of our superintendents in the region mentioning that one of their schools would be able to do this. Generally, no. The governor was asked that at the press conference yesterday. He will have that information at the next press conference likely, or maybe the one following that. They're trying to sort through the numbers. They don't have them completely. The reporter followed up and said, well, I mean, what, is it like 50% or so? And he said something to the effect of, no, it's not as high as we had hoped. So it, it seems to be that it's under 50% of schools across the state that would not meet that threshold. The number may be, you know, maybe 30%, maybe 40%, but I don't think it's very high. In our region, I don't think it's high at all. And I think you'll probably find pockets of the state that are higher than others. There's been an interesting conversation around populations and demographics and regions, and it's going to be different, I think, from region to region. Good question. Other questions?
How often are we requesting this information? And how are we requesting the information?
Great, great question. We were actually granted access to look this information up, where there was, there was an interesting time where we were not going to have access to this information, and we were going to have to figure it out locally. And actually, the state and the Agency of Education are working to verify numbers, so they are going to be letting us know, actually. It is my understanding, at this point, that we're not necessarily going to be coming up with the numbers ourselves locally, that we would at some point in time get that information, and we would be, we would be confirmed that our numbers are a certain percentage. But that's a good question. I think we, I would say we have a fairly accurate number because we're able to pull that information ourselves. It is some work, because you do have to go in and look up students. But I had, I had worked with Amy a little bit early January. The, don't get me wrong, the majority of the work was on Amy's end and the health office's end. We had done some work trying to collect all the vaccination status data that we had and get it in one place. Get all our, all our data in one place so that we could not only see consent information in one spreadsheet, we could see vaccination status, we could see contact phone numbers, things like that, grade levels. So to compile all that information in one place, what they would do is they'd go student by student, and they'd find that information when they had, you know, the three seconds of free time that they had until the guidance started shifting in January. Adrian, question?
I did have a question. Do you think there's any possibility, I mean, we, we, your numbers, and I know that the state hasn't. I don't think they've bought into the, well, they've had, they have natural immunity argument yet, but perhaps they will. But I'm wondering if, maybe if they do, do you think they might go back further? Because, I mean, natural immunity is also expected to last about three to four months.
Yep.
In, in the studies they've had so far. So, I mean, we might be able to look back and have more kids.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
But it's also a moving target, you know, to a certain extent.
I think the state is actually going to go somewhere different than that altogether. This was, I think it was said clearly enough in the press conference that that 80% threshold is going to be the last threshold we see. And the next step in moving from pandemic to endemic is going to be no recommendation for masking. I, I wonder how quickly that's going to happen.
No indication at all?
No, no. You know, I think, I think we have two logical spots. It's either going to happen before spring break or after. I think it's, I think it's safe to say it's going to happen before the end of the year. I don't think we would be, I don't think the administration would be signaling that the 80% is going away unless it was going to go away this school year. So the question really is, is it going to happen sooner rather than later? But there's not going to, they're not going to step it down to 60. They're not going to add unvaccinated positive cases. I don't think they're going to play any numbers games. They're going to say, it's 80% on the 28th. Maybe the end of March, it's going to be no recommendation. Interestingly, the CDC is saying that within, within a week or so, the CDC may be updating their masking recommendations, which right now, the CDC recommends everybody to wear them indoors, public spaces. That might change. And if the CDC recommendations change, I think that's, that's an interesting variable to throw in this timeline. If that changes in a week or so, we, we may see the Agency of Education two press conferences in say, actually, the numbers are continuing to improve. Because of that, we've come back from February breaks. We have not seen case numbers spike as we have with other breaks. It really does seem like Omicron has spread quickly and has hit a lot of our populations, so that it's done what it's going to do, and that masking doesn't make sense anymore. I think you, you work in some of the information around types of masks and effectiveness against Omicron, where cloth masks were reasonable early on. Omicron, it seems like cloth masks, single ply cloth masks are not effective in spread. There's also the question of masking in our schools. Are they being worn in a manner that is actually being spread down? That's another variable. We're definitely not all wearing KN95s, and we're not all wearing them properly. So at this point, when spread has dropped so much and the numbers continue to get better, and we're seeing hospitalizations drop, too, I think the big question, the big debate is the safety that we needed to, to create for our school communities has started to give way to some of the social, emotional, mental health concerns about continuing to wear masks, about maybe stigmatizing getting COVID-19. And don't get me wrong, there are some folks who will get COVID-19 and have gotten COVID-19, and the outcomes have been, have been tragic. There are a lot of folks where the outcomes aren't. And part of the debate is, are we, are we causing undue fear around the virus at this point? Is safety really what we're, what we're hanging on to? Or are we really causing more mental health problems? And we need to, we need to continue to make that shift to endemic. And it is going to be something that we have to live with. And it's going to be something where if, if you're a population that has a higher risk, you get vaccinated and you take some precautions. Do our, do our third graders need to wear masks through the remainder of the year when we know that outcomes for third graders, in general, statistically are, are not, not terrible? There may be some third graders who do have health issues, who their caregivers will want to take precautions, for sure. But is that something we want to continue wearing masks through the remainder of the year? It seems that the CDC is going to shift on that. It seems that the agency is going to shift on that. Maybe in March, maybe in April, maybe coming back from break. I can't, I can't predict that 100%. I can tell you, I have a few more things to tell you. I, I, sorry, I said it was going to be a lot. Questions? Okay. I'll tell you where our staff land on that. Our union folks did a survey, and they shared that with me. I talked to them today, and it's, it's fantastic. They, they had a wonderful response rate, which with surveys, rarely do you get this kind of a response rate. We had almost 200 responses. So we're talking about staff. When you add our teachers and support staff together, 200 is a pretty, pretty sizable chunk of that. I want to say when we ballpark, you know, somewhere between 200, 220 or so, when we talk about all our employees, that's, that's a great number. We had 82, 82 individuals that wanted to continue wearing masks and 115 individuals that are comfortable no longer wearing masks. That's a bad 40, 60 split. Slate Valley had polled their staff, and they had a little bit wider split. They had 70% in favor of leaving masks behind and about 30% that wanted to continue wearing masks. I will tell you now what we're thinking about, what other districts are thinking about as far as timing. You may have heard this, you may be aware, Slate Valley has announced that they're going to stop wearing masks on March 7. Part of that, I think, has to do with coming back from break and seeing how that break week goes. Part of that also has to do, I think, with following the state's guidance, because the state's guidance is on the 28th, that we use those 80% thresholds. The Champlain Valley districts, it's my understanding, and, and it may not be every single school or district, but it's my understanding that, hearing through the superintendent Grapevine, the Champlain Valley schools are going with March 14th, that they're going to abandon wearing masks. Rutland Northeast, I think, is leaning towards, let's wait till the 11th, and let's see how numbers are going, and then make the decision. So they, they, I don't think have made the decision yet or are not, not going to. They're going to check back in on the 11th. And other folks are leaning towards, well, let's follow the, the guidance. Let's work with the 80% thresholds on the 28th, and let's be paying really close attention to figure out when are we, when are we making the shift to no masks? Is it March 14th? You know, is it April 1st? When is it going to be? But it really does seem like it's becoming inevitable. You know, from the CDC, from the state level, regionally, I think there's value, if I were, so, here's my recommendation to the board. I would follow the state's guidance. I would also think about, when is that future date that we can, we can stop wearing masks? I wonder if there's going to be a bump after the break. And I think there is some value in seeing how that week after break goes. But I would, I would be concerned if we, if we start going against state guidance. And state guidance, I feel fairly confident, is eventually going to be not wearing masks. So I think we have to, we have to have the conversations we need to have to get there, and we need to do that in a way that's supportive of all our people. Having a, having a 60, 40 split is challenging. And I'm sure in our communities, there's a split, too. There are folks who, who are concerned and would like to wear masks through the rest of the year. There are some folks who wish we would have never worn masks, but I think they've been very, very supportive. We've got a lot of folks, I think, who have been following the guidelines and doing what we've asked, even though they haven't personally agreed with those guidelines. So I think it's, it's a challenging conversation. Questions?
Brian, those guidelines, that 80%, the, that 80% as of right now from the state does not include natural immunity.
Correct.
Okay.
Even if it did, we wouldn't quite be there.
I know, but I liked how, I, thank you very much for that data, though.
Is it fair to say that we will address this question at every future board meeting and revisit this question on a regular basis? Because, I mean, obviously, things are changing. As you said, the CDC might change their recommendations. The state certainly will follow through if the CDC changes. So, you know, it could, it could change quickly, we just don't know when.
I wonder, I wonder how the board feels, because I absolutely think it makes sense to revisit it on the 2nd, maybe take action on the 2nd. I wonder if the board has a sense of, of where you're feeling around, you know, March 14th or April 1st? If those are numbers that, that the board feels good about? If it's too soon to tell, and we want to come back from break week and see how things are going? One thing I will mention, and I did not say this, I'm sorry. I have had about five folks, all caregivers, reach out to me, and I think the board has probably heard from several, too, that were advocating for the mental health part of the conversation and removing masks. So I don't, I don't want to leave that out of the conversation. I have heard from several folks.
When you're saying the 2nd. When you're saying the second, are you talking about having a vote to pick a date? Or are you, I wasn't sure what you were suggesting?
Yeah, great question. I'm not sure what my recommendation would be on the second, actually.
So just revisit it on the second and see?
Yeah. You know, I think if we do nothing tonight, we are following guidelines. We are, because none of our schools would qualify on the 28th. I think by the second, we will have an update from the Agency of Education, and then on the second, we may be very comfortable saying, okay, the 14th is reasonable, the agency is rolling back their guidelines. Yeah, we can do that. That makes sense for us. So maybe it is premature for me to ask the board how you're feeling about the 14th. I just, I wonder if that decision's going to come more quickly than we think, maybe. I don't want to leave the board until the second without something to kind of think about, because if this does happen quickly, we'll get to the second, and we'll have a lot to think about then. So I'd like the board to start thinking about it now, if that makes sense.
Brian, how many more, or do they, and I don't follow this, so I'm sorry. Do they have a press, does the state have a press conference every week on Tuesday?
Yes.
They do?
I think they have been doing Tuesdays and Thursdays for a long time, and I think I could be wrong, because I don't tune into every single one. I think they're down to one a week on Tuesday.
Okay. And so?
You had nod from Andrea. Thank you.
Okay. I must be watching the sulps or something. But anyway, does the Agency of Education chime in at those meetings?
Yes. Dan French secretary speaks specifically to those guidelines for schools.
Okay. So based, and I'm just trying to develop a timeline in my head here. So there would be a meeting next Tuesday, which we're on break, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So unless they change it then, we're not going to be able to do anything anyways.
Well, there would be a second Tuesday there, right before.
Right, which is the first, March 1st.
Right.
But the kids would only be back for two days. And, you know, I would wonder if two days is sufficient to make a decision, you know, that everything's going to be okay, kind of thing.
You mean wait and see how the numbers play out?
Yeah.
On the station?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, that's just my opinion, but I think when they come back, when students and staff come back from break, you probably need a good week to get a feel for what's happening. And that gives another Tuesday for a meeting on the first, you know?
I think it could be that the Agency of Education on March 4th, it could be that the administration and the press conference, sorry, did I say 4th? I should have said first. It could be on the first that they update their guidance, in which case, we could do something on the second. If you don't update their guidance by the first, I do think you're right, that it might be too hard to tell on the numbers. I do know that we're sending test kits home again with everybody with the advice of, please test on the Saturday and Sunday before you come back. So it could be that we know some of that sooner than other breaks, but I think you're right, that we can't really bank on knowing our numbers enough on the second. So I think really, it's only if we get an update from the agency on the first, by the first, that we'd have a lot more to go on, if that makes sense.
Brian, Andrea has a question.
Andrea?
So realistically, our board meeting on the second may be a totally new crew.
That's true.
And we have
That's true.
Going to have to do a lot of reorganization. But then, I also wanted to bring up, too, so the first, I'm not quite sure how much they'll say, being at town meeting throughout the whole entire state.
Oh, you know, you're right.
And the governor may not have his press conference that day, just because of it being town meeting day, because I know he has pulled it in the past.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that, but I bet you they won't have a press conference.
Yeah, I'm thinking he's, I think last year, he pulled it, and he's pulled it before. But then we also, so even if we try to discuss on the second, which is like a reorg type of board meeting, then we run to the, what, the 15th, providing nothing changes with the state guidelines, but then we're looking at our April break, too. And I'm not saying push this out. I'm not at all. I'm just saying, we have a lot of different factors contributing to all of this, because we may not hear anything on the first. I doubt he's going to have something, so.
That's a really good point, Andrea.
Oh, BJ has something.
Kind of going back to Len's thing, I'm reading the update on the AOE website, and one of the things I'm noticing is that they give, like, an extra two weeks before the recommendation starts, so they'll change the 80%, but what they're saying is it actually doesn't even go into effect until February 28th.
Yes, correct.
I would assume that when they go to say no masks, it would still be, you know, two weeks ahead. So they may say, we're changing our guidance as of this date.
Like, March 15th?
March 15th. Something I would be comfortable saying is just voting to say, I want to follow the guidance of the state to the letter, so that if it happens that, you know, we don't have a meeting, and they change it, and they give a date, that's our date. That's just
I mean, if it happens mid-meeting.
If it happens in between meetings, so just so the public knows, just take a stance that we are going to follow the guidance to the letter. So in this case, I would follow that as of February 28th, if any of our schools happen to hit that 80%, which doesn't look like it will, we would be no masked. And if the government updates, I would say, we're just going to follow that to the letter, is what I would vote for. I don't know where
And I think that's a reasonable action, BJ, and I hope I didn't cut you off there.
No.
Because I think the action the board took in the summer was a little bit above and beyond the state's recommendations, because there was the 80% threshold, and I think we said, we're going to wear masks, and we'll revisit it in, you know, December or something like that. So I think that would be a change that we'd have to make. I guess we could go back and look at what that action actually was, but I think we'd need to have some action to follow the guidelines on the 28th, if we were to happen to have a school that hit that 80% threshold.
Brian, do you have any other information? Because I don't know if anybody's going to want to make a motion at the end of your presentation, so that's it. Would you like to make that as a motion, BJ?
Okay. I'm making a motion that we follow the guidance of the Vermont State, the Vermont AOE.
Which is the Agency of Education.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Len. Further discussion? We're open. Okay.
Sorry, just a point of clarification. Are we committing to both that 28th, 80%, and if they were to announce a new date of entirely dropping, like, just how broad?
I will amend that, yes, even
Well, following the state guidelines currently would be the 80%. That 80% is what might change. So if we continue
And any updates? Is it worth just amending the motion to be "and any updates" in the future?
Yes, I thought you said that.
I can say "and any updates." I think timing-wise, March 2nd, we can make a second motion if there are updates.
We can.
But I would, I will amend "and any updates" to it.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, Sam. Are there other comments? Anybody? Okay, I'll call the question. Are we going to adopt the new, or a COVID response that is slightly adjusted to say that we will absolutely follow the AOE suggestions, or I guess suggestions?
Guidelines.
Guidelines, thank you. Better word. The guidelines and any adjustments that they make in the future. Please raise your hand. I guess that's better to do. Okay, thank you. Are there noes? Okay, Bruce is a no. Are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
I do have one other request.
Go ahead.
Brian, is it the data that you provided, that sheet? Would that be something that could go on the website to let us, let the public know where we stand with that? Is that an appropriate request, do you think?
Let me check on that. Let me check on that. I guess I did just share it publicly, right? I imagine that that information is not traceable to any individual, so I think we're probably safe to do that.
I'm just thinking, if we're saying we're following the guidelines, we have 80%, I would like to be able to provide the information to the public as updated as possible.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
I think that's a good idea, great idea. Anything else before we move on to the next agenda item?
Thank you. I know that was long and a lot. I appreciate it.
Well, and very necessary. Thank you, Brian.
And actually, you ended exactly at your
We caught up.
Time, we caught up.
Yeah, well, that's good. That's good. The 12th item on the agenda is negotiations. Are they subject to open meeting law? That was the conversation from last board meeting, and as to whether or not there was, the negotiations committee had been warning our meetings to be transparent that we were having our meetings. We were not subject to open meeting law, and there was a question at the board meeting as to whether or not that is true, that we were not subject to open meeting law. So I had sent around the court case that decided that that is not the case, and I will, it was decided from the negotiations committee of Caledonia Central Supervisory Union and the Caledonia Central Education Association, and they had disputed whether or not, I'm reading you the summary, disputed whether collective bargaining negotiations between a school board negotiation committee and a teachers' association constituted, quote, "meetings" under the open meeting law, and if so, whether those meetings may be held in executive session. The Caledonia Superior Court dismissed the committee's complaint seeking declaratory relief for lack of subject matter jurisdiction. The Vermont Supreme Court reversed the dismissal for lack of subject matter jurisdiction, and held that Vermont's open meeting law did not apply to labor-related or enabled negotiations between a school district negotiating committee and a labor union. So as the person who had thought she was doing the right thing by warning, or, you know, by putting out those meeting warnings so that people were aware that we were negotiating, I apologize that we seemed to have been late on one of those, but we were not subject to the open meeting law at all. So there was no, there was no actual issue. Bruce, you have a comment?
Yeah, let me take my hand down.
Oh, okay.
I called the Secretary of State's office and talked to a man there, and he said, if you have a meeting, a committee meeting, that requires a quorum, you have to go by open meeting law. He also said that negotiations can take place in that meeting, and that can take place in executive session.
I don't know what to tell you, Bruce. I'm reading
I'm not telling you what he said.
Yep, okay, I mean, I'm
The law said to me, that's why I called.
Okay. I don't know how to solve this issue. I can make a request of our legal advice from our attorney tomorrow, and I'm sure he will give us an answer, and I will report back at the next meeting, or I will send it to the person who is representing Shrewsbury.
Why not just call the Secretary of State's office, and not pay the guy? Not pay our lawyer? If the information's free?
It is. I don't quite know, well, we will have a further report at the next meeting. How's that? Committee business, personnel, contracts. Do we have any?
That would be me.
Oh, yes, we did, because we just approved those.
We do. Let's see, I'm going to do this in two parts. First, and these are all athletic contracts for approval, there's offering a contract as varsity softball assistant to Jake Tanner, a varsity softball assistant contract to Brittany Blanchard, and a varsity baseball assistant contract to Caleb Whitney. And I would make a motion that all three of these folks be offered contracts.
Okay. Are you making that motion? Do we have a second?
Maria.
Okay, thanks, Maria.
All those in favor, raise thy hands. Opposed? Abstain. Okay? The second one, and this was in the packet, all of these, actually, were in the packet that we received for the board meeting tonight. These are all from Kim. I spoke with Kim today. The last two, for varsity football head coach and varsity football assistant, the head coach, Phil Hall, the assistant, Ethan Zorzy. You may have noticed that neither of them have a salary assigned to them. And what Kim shared with me is she's holding off on the salary assignments, because Phil Hall, the head coach, wants to pay his assistants more than they've received in the past. Now, there's a limited amount of dollars available for these contracts, okay? So it's not like she's going to come asking for more money to pay these folks. But she wants to get Phil and Ethan contracts so that they can start doing things with the kids now. She expects all of the, you know, legally, they couldn't meet with the kids because they don't have a contract. So, you know, they'll, they want to start as soon as they can, just in terms of interest level and those kinds of things. And then she figured, Kim felt that by our next meeting, March 2nd, she would have all of the other information in on the other assistant coaches, and at that time, we could plug in the salaries. Okay? So basically, what I'm going to ask is that we offer Phil Hall a contract as varsity football head coach, and Ethan Zorzy, varsity football assistant, with no salaries named. So I make that a motion.
Do we have a second? Andrea or Maria?
Okay. Discussion? Does that make sense to everybody, just in terms of what Kim's asking us to do? Again, I think it's important, because once they've signed a contract, there's insurance issues and all those kinds of things, so that will help them. So, all those in favor of the two contracts for Phil Hall and Ethan Zorzy? Raise your hand. Okay, I think we're good there. All right. Thank you. Just so folks know, we updated on the superintendent search process. In personnel, we also did a quick update on the administrator's search process. We're continuing with that. Once we get back from break, we'll set up a more specific timeline in terms of following those processes for Shrewsbury and Clarendon. We do have openings, high school English teacher, science teacher, special ed teacher, and parent educators, and bus drivers are always welcome. So, and the next meeting is March 2nd at 6:00.
I don't know if we can have a meeting on March 2nd, because you will have changing members.
Excellent point.
So
Scratch that.
That has to be decided at the meeting, who's in the committee.
So back that up, Ann. I do not know when there'll be another committee meeting. I may not even be here.
There will be a meeting, I'm sure. Okay.
We'll let you know.
Thank you, Len. Can I interrupt before BJ starts up? I was thinking when I gave the information on the I was thinking when I gave the information on the court case, and I totally forgot the place I got the information, and that was from the email that we received from our legal representative, or our legal advice person, Pietro Lynn, who is an education law attorney in the state of Vermont. And I asked him, do we have, are, are employee negotiations subject to the open meeting law? Very clear question. And if he would please cite the case that was deciding that. His answer, "They are not. Here is the case that decided it, and it was the case that I described." And that's the response. Bruce, that's as far as I'm going to go. If you would like to talk to the Secretary of State's office, we welcome your news when...
I'll be happy to.
Yep, I'm sure you will. Thank you. But now we are on policy.
Yay.
Yay.
Actually, I'm really excited. We finally have a policy that we're going to make a motion for a first reading. C3, public participation at board meetings, is finally up for a first reading.
Yay.
And I want to thank the public who came and gave us information on that. I want to thank the members of the policy committee who came, the administration who helped out with this. A lot of time has gone into that. There was a big gap in the middle where we had to, where other policies have come in that took priority, which happens. But it is finally up for a first reading. And I'm going to make the motion. I would like to make a motion that we adopt, no, we don't adopt, we move, what's the wording?
Approve is for...
Approve policy C3, public participation at board meetings for a first reading.
Public comment, isn't it?
Public participation. Oh, that's a good thing to check.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, what's that?
I just printed it.
That's a policy.
Yeah, the document does say comment.
Yes, so, the, we have to go by the document. So the agenda is incorrect.
Okay.
The actual policy name is public comment at board meetings.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, BJ?
Yes.
Is that a name change? Because I think our current C3 is, is actually titled public participation.
I do believe it is a name change. I kind of remember that being a discussion point.
Because the policy starts with the school board realizes that public participation is important, so that might have just been the, and then we went to guidelines for public comment.
Do I have a second? Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, without saying that, I'm going to throw it up to a vote. All in favor of, I always forget the word. All in favor of going to first reading?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
I do it all the time.
It looks, I think we got everybody.
Well...
Okay. Our next meeting is going to be on the 8th. It is going to be a reorganization meeting. And I do have on that we're going to kind of review some of our processes and policies. We're not going to be reviewing any policies at that meeting, so kind of take note, Jody. I know you've always been prepared for that, but it's just going to be a reorganization meeting on the 8th there.
I think the same advice holds for you.
March 8th?
What?
Len, you don't even know who's on your committee yet.
I know, that's why I said it's going to be a reorganization.
I know, okay. They might not want to meet then. That's my point.
Okay, forget the date.
[laughing] Sorry, I really am.
[laughing]
Okay. So, scratch the next meeting, but hopefully that's what we'll talk about. Thank you, BJ.
There we go.
Sorry. Buildings, what?
We'll post that in the...
Oh, yes.
...record, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Report from buildings and grounds, you had a meeting.
We had a meeting, yeah. We sort of made the same time meeting over there, that this building right here in this room was taken up by negotiations.
Yeah, I know.
So, even kept one of your, one of your negotiators in with us for a while. Met with, met with Gary. Hadn't had anything in quite a while. Gary had an issue with one of the schools doing weird things with water that shouldn't have happened. So we made, we made a decision, did some changes there. That'll be, that'll be coming up probably, probably this, this vacation that's coming up, they're going to straighten out. We've still having problems with buildings that were a number of years ago, to have seemed to have lead in different areas. And this one school had had that, but they haven't changed it away, now that it's pretty much cleaned up without a press. And they're looking at somewhere like four, four billion, one billionth of an inch of that lead. And it's just, it's, they're very slowing down. They're changing things as they go. We're trying to get that straightened out. We touched on some of the things in this building that we've been having with, with heat problems, and some of the things that because our summer equipment's starting to grow very old, needs to be somewhat rebuilt and then replaced in the summertime. Rebuilding would be easier to hold on to a little bit, but it's not going to last very long, at least we can cripple it through the air. Let's see. We talked about all the other schools, things are going pretty well. We're having a changing of some of the problems at Clarendon, and it's going to be done this, this coming, this coming vacation time. There's also going to be some work started, we hope, with the former central office in Clarendon that, where we had the superintendent's office at the time. Going to be Coral's program that she has coming up, and that's supposed to be starting, I think, during that week. But then again, the state hasn't really given us the okay. I did do a check, we, we talked about having a backup camera on some of the buses that we have, the buses that we have, that, the new buses that came in have that as, as a normal situation. The problem is, the buses that we have have a number of age things, and probably another, anywhere from two to three years, going to last. The cost for those is roughly $4,000 a unit.
Wow.
So we are likely not going to do that unless we get something we think is going to last longer possibly. But at least give it a thought anyway. I used to drive school buses, believe it or not. I was 18 years old, come out of high school, dropped into the school bus and drove it for two days, two years. Interesting. But our bus driving's going to be, going to be a little fun. Normally, you just, you have to watch what you're doing, you have to remember what's behind you when you start to move. You have to keep open eyes and keep a, a good, a good situation. You can't, can't look it away. Other than that, everything seems to be going okay. I hadn't had a meeting, believe it or not, for seven months. It just kept, gets pushed out. I am going to probably work on at least one every three months, likely one every two. We'll get into the, the summer, we'll hold off for a bit and go from there.
Liz has a question for you.
Go ahead.
Hey Doug, I am wondering, can we use ESAR money for rear backup cams on buses to retrofit them?
That wasn't looked into, but I'll, I'll talk to Gary tomorrow, and we'll see. If we do, we'll, we'll get back to you, that'll be for sure.
Or Brian, anything we might not know about that might be utilized?
You know, that, that might be hard because a lot of what we're looking at with the ESAR funds really, really have to do with academic recovery, social emotional support, things like that. So there, there are things that can't quite fit in those categories. We can look at it though, for sure. And if we can use it, great. If we're, if not, I don't know that that's going to be the worst, the biggest expense for the district. I'm sure we could probably find a way to do that locally.
It'll be good. At least a couple, a couple will actually put us into good, good programming. The other bus, the newest one that's came through, we have one here now. The other one will be here probably within a week. There were whatever reasons they were, but they were little problems. So they, that's coming back to us real soon. And we got rid of the, two of the ones that we had wanted to replace. They were in rough shape. We didn't get it as much as we thought we were going to, but at least the buses aren't here taking up the space and being plugged in to stay electric for that time. But we will meet again soon.
Thanks, Doug. Nice to have a buildings and grounds update. Community engagement. Sam?
I just want to open with our next meeting is definitely scheduled for, just kidding, we don't have one because we'll be reorganizing. But with that, we, we did meet, gosh, it's on my calendar. We did have a meeting, and the biggest thing to report out was that we had been looking at a community survey to be organized by us, and have now been talking, administration is pursuing a professional survey company that's going to come in and do a much more comprehensive, kind of all encompassing, so that we're not kind of, you know, death by a thousand cuts, sort of. That way, we hope to improve, you know, response rate alone, right, would be bolstered by that. So that's, I'd say, the biggest news coming out of that, as well as our, you know, conversations being shifted to more than gladly give a public forum for folks to put their input in on the search committee. And with reorganization coming up, you know, once that happens, that's when you can expect for us to start, likely scheduling those traditional conversations and all that sort of thing. Unless anybody else on the committee can think of something that I've missed.
No.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Negotiations, about where we were last time. We've started talking with the support staff. We've had one meeting, we have another meeting coming up. And we are in the final stages of, of finishing up the teacher contract. We have two issues that we're, we're trying to work out. And other than that, we will hopefully be able to bring a contract to both the, you know, association members and to the school board for ratification, which would be great. Obviously, the support staff is pretty far behind on that because we've only had one meeting. And that's my update. So now we have the ad hoc committees. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. So, the ad hoc committee that I'm chairing, which is the art display, we finally had our first meeting, finally. I thought it was, it went well. It was not well attended, but it was kind of thrown together at the last minute. We didn't have a quorum, so it was more of a brainstorming session. It was attended by myself. Len was there, Ann was there, and Ken Fredette was there. And we covered a lot of ground. We got some good ideas about how we want to incorporate all the schools, not just one school. We also did some groundwork on the statement of inclusion. We've got some ideas out there. And the next meeting will be February 23rd at 6 o'clock. That'll be obviously the last one before reorganization. I will still be here. I hope to still chair it, so things will continue.
You can say, I did have a, a, a community, a community person make a suggestion, whether or not you wanted to think about, or maybe the board wants to think about, renaming your committee to be something a little bit more, since we added the inclusion statement into that, whether there is any interest in maybe, you know, doing something like inclusion and equality display, or, or something to that effect. But I wanted to bring it up while I had everybody's attention.
I think it's a great idea. I think that...
I think you guys can rename yourselves.
Yeah, we'll talk about it the next meeting, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to forget before I had that opportunity. Len?
Nothing to update on our ad hoc committee, although I would, Sam, at some point, if, if you have administration looking at that survey, I'd like to see that just so that I make sure that I'm not repeating the same questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean, I believe it's more that they had brought to us what they're going to do, so perhaps one of, like Jody, I mean, Jody who's came to ours could go to your ad hoc meeting and kind of discuss what they're looking at. Great, I see a thumbs up.
Okay, so I'll, well, we'll talk about when we're going to meet again.
Indeed.
Okay.
In March.
And you may not be here.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, thank you. Well, not that, but, yeah, sorry, I didn't, yeah, that was not, that was unintentional. Finance. Oh, sorry, Matt, go ahead.
One other thing on the committee that, the ad hoc committee I'm chairing, is we also discussed incorporating the policy committee into it to create a policy around what can and cannot be displayed in the display, so.
Because you were sort of talking about it being an evolving...
Yes. Kind of like a...
Might need a policy, definitely, to evolve the way you want it to.
We'll talk at some point, BJ.
Yeah, no problem.
Sounds good. We are down to the finance committee. Liz?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, for consideration and approval, I'm just waiting for my computer to warm up. This has been sitting. Okay, we have payroll this evening for approval. Regular payroll in the amount of $624,038.35, and that is the bottom line. And for pay orders, we have from the general fund in the amount of $372,662.17. Also, from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $29,928.98. We have from our after-school program, a pay order in the amount of $895.34. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,188.39, for a grand total of $406,674.88. From our student activity accounts from Mill River, we have a pay order in the amount of $3,000. From Clarendon Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of $453.55, for a grand total of $3,453.55. And I do move that we, we accept and approve these pay orders and payroll as presented.
Do we have a second? Doug or Matt? Liz, do you want to ask, fill this with this, or would you like me to follow through?
Say that again, sorry.
So do you want me to, to call the voter, or would you like to?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please raise your hand if you are approving the pay orders and payroll warrant as presented. And we have, okay, thank you.
And we have our annual meeting of the Mill River Union Unified School District next Thursday, February 24th at 7:00 p.m.
Yes, and we will all still be there. So, we are down to transact other legal business. Is there other legal business to do transact? Len?
No, I'm going to bring this up again, and actually, well, actually, BJ brought it up, and I happened to notice it the other day. The state flag is pretty tattered and torn. And it's still pretty tattered and torn.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee thing.
But Len?
Yep.
I, I've got a brand new one sitting in my office. We'll put it right up tomorrow. It came in quietly.
Okay.
Great.
Well, that was great.
That was easy. We can just take that off of other business.
See, Len, how fast we can work.
Yeah. Thanks, Gary. I appreciate that.
Doug has a meeting, and the whole thing just falls together. Bruce, did you have something?
Yeah. For the last week and a half or so, we've been inundated with emails against the board, against the board chair. And I think we need to talk about it. It's like the elephant in the room right now.
I am actually hoping to go into executive session at the end of the meeting because I would like to have a conversation on that. I did receive some legal advice, so.
Is that execs...
It is.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, it is.
Does it fit the criteria?
It does. Len will be making that motion soon. Matt, did you have something?
No.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm cloying over here. The, the only other thing, if I may, and maybe, I'll wait till agenda building, I'm sorry, if it's better there.
Okay, agenda building. Len?
I just, it was interesting because I was looking at some old tapes of school board meetings. And back last April, it was, when we were talking about the bylaws, it was mentioned that they would be sent out to all the board members, and then actually that it would end up in the policy committee. But, but obviously that didn't happen, and we've been working on it. I just, I just think the, the bylaws and the goals are, are two things. We, we're going to have a new superintendent, a new person coming in here. And I think one of the first things they should ask is, so what are your goals? I mean, if, if someone wants to be a superintendent of this district, they really need to, to see what our goals and, and, you know, maybe not the bylaws so much, but certainly the goals. We've been working on those two things for close to a year. And I just really, really think it's important that we get them buttoned up. And it's, it's going to be a little difficult because we will have at least two new board members and maybe more. But I think it's important that we get them done. members and maybe more, but I think it's important that we get them done. And then I think it's important that we revisit them every year to make sure, like, because the description of the committee, the purposes of the committee are completely different in the bylaws than they are on the website. I mean, completely different. So, that's the kind of thing that, and in fact, part of the issue around that we've been getting these emails deals with what the bylaws said and what state law said, because the bylaws were outdated and we hadn't done anything, and the state law changed things. So, you know, we need to make sure that we keep an eye on these things so that we're... it makes our lives easier, I believe.
I think that's a good suggestion. We can certainly put... Do you... What would you like to put on the agenda? The next meeting is the reorganization meeting, so we can bring it up as a revisit. We have not approved our work yet, so we're leaving that to the board that will be formed again on... So, I think even without our putting it on the agenda, there is... It will be on the agenda in a very, you know, I don't know if that's the meeting that we want to revisit them.
No, I don't think you're going to have time.
Well, I don't either, but I'm...
No, no, I appreciate that, but no, I don't think we can. I just want it to be on the agenda that we need to, you know, and I think, it's a little difficult, but, you know, we might like to have everybody there, but the reality is, like, policy, you know, we, the policy committee works on it, and then it's brought to the full board for approval. And you sort of trust the policy committee that they've done their job. Same thing with finance in terms of the budget. So, you know, if we can't get everybody to attend a meeting, I think as long as we can have a quorum and continue to work on them and button them up, because we're closed...
We are.
I just think that's important.
I don't disagree. I ask again, do you actually want something on the next agenda? And you said no. Okay.
Yeah, not to discuss them, but just to set a date.
Okay, all right. I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Set a date.
Adrian, can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Question is for our two people up there who are not going to be here during this next situation we have in a couple of months. Maria and Asha, are you two going to be at the annual meeting that we have coming up?
I do intend to be at the annual meeting. I believe that Andrea is also not running for another term. I think there's three of us. Is that true?
Andrea, I thought you were working.
I do intend to be at the annual meeting. Thank you for asking.
No, I'm on the ballot.
Oh, I was going to say, I thought you were.
I will be... What are your feelings?
Sorry, Maria, stuff would be made for me.
No, I'm glad you're there. I'm so sorry.
Folks, I will be at the, I will be attending the annual meeting as well.
Okay, I just was, I didn't want you guys to go if you weren't coming to that meeting without us saying how great you are for what you do in the town that you're there. You do a very good job of defending the people that are there, and we'll miss you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
So sweet.
We're missing you as well.
You can always come and visit.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, somebody will be here.
You should set your next day in over here.
You bet. You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Liz?
Oh, Liz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have my hands up. Sorry, Adrian.
No, I didn't sit. Yep.
So, um, oh, my computer's holding a little on my hand. I beg your pardon. Regarding agenda building, I think it's important that we have vision and goals work on the next agenda and that that presentation in its current form is part of the board packet. I think it's, you know, to Len's point, in addition to bylaws, vision and goals definitely need to be wrapped up, and I think should be on subsequent agendas until they are wrapped up. In light of the fact that we have a new superintendent coming in, I also think it's nice for all personnel, because I suspect everybody's evaluations will be tied to the board's vision and goals for the district. It's nice to see long-term, it's nice to have long-term goals and really see, be able to see, you know, down the pipe and what's coming, so folks can begin thinking about what that's going to look like for them personally. You know, everybody's goals are established for the year, but for the next year. So, I would just like to see that on the agenda.
Liz, I hesitate to put on the agenda actual work on that, on the goals at the next meeting, because Len's right. It's going to be a pretty packed meeting just because we're reorganizing. We have to do all the committee assignments, and the people who will have been elected and joining the board will have only been even available to read anything for a day because of town meeting being the night before.
Right.
So, I think putting everything in the board packet is absolutely a great idea and that we introduce everything and we say that this is going to happen.
Yeah, if nothing else, some orientation.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same page and that nobody's surprised if it's not on as a action item.
Yeah, if it's a three-hour initiation meeting, that's not fun.
All right. I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
If it can, if there can be some sort of orientation introduction, something great...
I'll put it on the agenda.
You know, read this, but it, you know, let's keep working on it.
Yep, sounds reasonable.
Remind people to, that if they do get elected, they have to get sworn in.
That is a very good idea. Before any, you know, if you know anybody who is running and they're not on this meeting, although most, a good number of them are, at least one person from Wallingford is not, Mr. Garland, before they can come and take part in the meeting as a board member, they have to have been sworn in by their town clerk.
Yep.
And they won't have that much time to do it.
I feel like Julie Sharon does a really nice job of contacting people to get sworn in.
I don't know, Asha, if you're, can remind Gail to hunt people down because we have a meeting the next day? That would be good. You know, whoever wins in Tinmouth, that would be great.
Because they only have Wednesday.
Right, and I know that'll happen in Truesbury because our town clerk is pretty proactive on that, but I will remind her too.
Thank you.
But that was a great, that's a great notion, because otherwise, we might have people in the room that are just sort of there, which is not helpful. Okay, so, does anybody have anything else that they want on the agenda? Yes, Ann?
Do you want policy approval? Because I'll have to put the date.
Yes, please.
Want to do the policy approval?
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Are you content with that?
I'm content with it. I think it's very...
Okay, that's fine, and we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Somebody will get it done. Okay.
You'll be there.
Yes, I will be there.
Yes.
Brian?
Usher your policy through.
Finally.
Okay.
Brian?
Brian, go ahead.
And this does not have to be at the next meeting, but I just want to plant this seed. We have not heard from principals in a while.
We have not.
And I wonder, you know, the reorganization meeting might be long and not the time for it, but I think new board members hearing from principals, updates about how things are going would probably be a good idea. I know we've had the board goals work and the bylaws work has taken some time, and there's a reason why we haven't had space for some of those, but I just suggest that we could help.
Brian, you are as responsible for the agenda as the chair, so put it on.
That, yes, I am aware of that. I wanted the group to know I was thinking about that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that. Okay, double check. Anybody else? All right. Then I would like to go into executive session if Len you had said that you would. And just to be clear, we may come out of executive session with a statement, we may not. I don't know if people want to hang around. We do have another link for board members to join that was sent out earlier this evening. I'm assuming you all have it on your computers, and the people in here will either go in the next room, or if there's nobody else, we can just... It's safer for the conversation to be confidential if we go into another room, but we have to still, we have... Where did Matt go? Oh, he's just running out. So, go ahead.
Okay.
One of the reasons to go into executive session can be pending or probable civil... no, I'm sorry. Confidential attorney-client communications if made to provide legal services to the body.
Okay.
So, that being said, we can, we have to do two motions. One, the premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body involved at a substantial disadvantage. So, I would make that a motion.
Do we have a second? Thanks, Liz. Further discussion? Okay, I will call the question then that we go into executive session for the reason that Len outlined, which is attorney-client information, something to that.
Yep.
Okay. Please raise your hand if you agree. I guess that's the... Okay, that appears to be unanimous. Thank you. Second motion to actually go into executive session.
Correct. I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Lots of seconds. You can... I guess we'll go with Liz seconded that.